All right, if I can have everybody's attention. Welcome, thank you all for coming tonight. Tonight we are talking about the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program, affectionately known as MVP. So this is a public listening session and this is the last requirement for the town before we can submit the report and request MVP designation for the town of Plimpton. So my name is Melissa Ricos, I'm a project manager with Beta Group. This is Mary Beth Irwin, she's also with Beta. Beta has been certified by the state to facilitate this program with various communities. So our agenda for tonight and for this presentation, I'm going to give you an overview of the program and then talk about some of the science and resource information behind it. This is some of the same information that was provided to the group that attended the workshop. Mary Beth is then going to give an overview of the workshop and the findings. And then at the end, we'll be happy to take any questions, comments, feedback from the group here in this room. So this program is through the state. It's funded through Governor Baker's initiatives for climate change strategies for the Commonwealth. You know, he has different programs for reducing greenhouse emissions to get to the root cause and combat climate change. This MVP program is more geared towards preparing towns for the impacts of climate change. So this here is a map of the state. This was updated last in July 2019. So the communities that are in purple are those that currently have achieved MVP designation. Those in yellow are those like Plimpton who are in the process. The MVP planning process has basically five steps, starting with engaging the community and ending with taking action. So the four steps in the middle, identifying climate change impacts and hazards, completing an assessment of the vulnerabilities and strengths within a town, and developing prioritized actions to address them, are all done through the MVP workshop. So the workshop, in order to conduct the workshop, we met with Liz and some members of town. We invited groups from within the town, there's some people here in the audience who are in our workshop. That was police, fire, conservation commission, selectmen were invited, there was planning was invited. You know, the stakeholders within the town who could really speak to the strengths and vulnerabilities that the town has and the hazards that affect you on a daily basis. So the MVP program has two grant opportunities. The first is the planning grant, which is what we're doing now. The state funded the entire planning grant for the town of Plimpton. So having us here to facilitate the workshop and the resources that go into it is all funded by the state. None of this is coming out of town budget in any way. The second grant program are the action grants. So once you get designation, MVP designation, then whatever you identified in your workshop and in your report, you can then go and ask the state for money for an action grant to actually do some of those things. So one of the focuses of this program is incorporating nature-based solutions into action. So this was brought up at the workshop. Nature-based solutions are things that use natural systems, they mimic natural processes and work or work in tandem with traditional approaches to kind of address hazards like flooding, erosion, drought, using things like low-impact designs and green infrastructure. So to get into a little bit of the science behind the climate change numbers, Massachusetts observed climate change. So this is what has been recorded for change. Temperature across the state, the average temperature has gone up almost three degrees since 1895. The growing season has increased by 15 days since 1950. We've had almost a foot of sea level rise in Boston since 1922. And heavy precipitation events have increased by 55% since 1958. There's a website called Resilient Mass and it's through the Commonwealth and you can go on there and get all kinds of information about projected climate change across the state. So just have a couple slides here that pick a couple of these maps. So this is Massachusetts. Here the color range here is the projected change in number of days above 90 degrees Fahrenheit, and this is under a medium emissions scenario. So if we start to decrease our emissions and address the climate change, would be the better case scenario. Plymouth County is anticipated to increase days above 90 degrees by 11 and a half days by 2050. By 2090, the number of days above 90 degrees are projected to increase by 16 days per This map shows precipitation, so the number of days where you have greater than one inch, which is a real significant rainstorm. By 2050, in Plymouth County is supposed to increase by about a day per year. And by 2090, almost two days with those high-intensity rain events. This slide here gives a little bigger picture. The column here in the middle is the observed value between 1971 and 2000. So this is what we're seeing now for the average temperature, 47.5 degrees Fahrenheit. And then across the state, the average changed by 2050 and 2090. Again, we have the days per year with temperature above 90 degrees Fahrenheit. Not only is temperature expected to be hotter in the summer, but also warmer in the winter. So the number of days below freezing is expected to decrease over the course of, you know, over the course of a winter. Precipitation anticipated to increase as well. So why does that matter? I mean, warmer winters, longer growing seasons, be more like North Carolina, I mean, that might sound nice to some people, but really we're seeing the effects now that that has, you know, on our climate. So increasing temperatures, some of the negative impacts are increase in heat-related illnesses if you're not, you know, ready to deal with those, you know, heat waves that come through. Higher ozone levels and poorer air quality. Changes to growing season, we see these toxic algae blooms, all the algae in the lakes that kind of takes over by the end of the summer. They're going to become larger and more frequent. Also, you know, something that we've all dealt with is the vector-borne diseases and they're finding that, you know, a lot of the cause of this is because the mosquitoes and ticks have a longer season. I know I couldn't wait in October to get that first frost so that the kids could go outside and play again. And if we're extending our growing season and our winters are not as cold, this compounds the effects. There's also a larger demand on our energy systems in the summer when we have these heat waves. So increased precipitation and the downpour intensity, the risk, obvious risk of flooding is more frequent. You also get flooding of structures that didn't necessarily flood before. Buildings, you run into things where you have mold problems that start to happen. Water quality impacts, when you have these frequent intense rain events, it's carrying everything, it's washing it into our lakes and streams. Again, it's after these large rain events that we have beach closures and you get the toxiealgae blooms and all the pesticides and herbicides and everything running into And lastly, the change I wanted to highlight is that terrain and snow patterns. So you get potential increases in drought effects when the weather's fluctuating so much. So I know here it's a big concern, the local water supply and the wells and what happens, you know, when things get dry for an extended period of time. Also, extreme weather increases, you know, the safety risks, the public service disruptions, power outages, which I know you're all familiar with as well, when the ice storms, the snow storms, if these things are happening more frequently with more intensity. So that's a little of the background on the program and why we're here, why this is important and what those in the workshop were really looking at for the program. So now Mary Beth's going to give a little overview on the workshop, what we did here in Plimpton.
Yep. So you were here a little while ago and we started, we're just going to go through each of these so quickly. You know, you were going to characterize the hazards first so that we know what the problem is, and then you're going to go through these next couple steps, which each have slides, so we'll get there. So you start by characterizing hazards. So you can read all that or you can just skip to the bottom, which is a nice little summary that the hazard would be like the sun, so something that could cause a potential problem, like flooding or vector-borne disease. And then you characterize what the risk of that hazard is. So the risk of the sun would be sunburn or heat rash. And then what's the vulnerability versus strength? So these are each of the things that are categorizing as we go through. So the vulnerability would be length of exposure to sun, right? So your sunburn won't be as bad if you're not outside. The strength would be, or the action would be sunscreen, put on sunscreen before you go out in the sun. So we did that same sort of process with all of the things that are related to the town. So if you guys have a problem with flooding, we could say, okay, flooding would be the hazard. Then what is the vulnerability or the risk? The risk of flooding would be road closures or, you know, bogs filling up, houses getting flooded. And then the vulnerability could be, are you in a flood plain? Are you, do you have flood insurance? Or do you have laws or regulations that prohibit building in really high groundwater areas? Things like that. And then the action could be, one of the big ones in my group was looking into bylaws to protect flood plains or bog owners or whatever you already have, so that moving forward, you can keep it either safe, if it's already safe, or prevent it from becoming unsafe. Yeah, so that was one of the big ones, flooding. And here we are. Flood, first one. So these are some of the hazards that we talked about. And you all live here, so you can see that tornado is probably one of your less likely issues, but flooding is definitely one of the top ones and anything in between. So drought is also a problem because you guys have wells and ice rooms affect. Power lines or whatever, so all these things were discussed and then you come up with your top four hazards. So you say like, these are all the hazards that you could encounter in Plimpton, but talk about the biggest ones that are going to have the most impacts. And what the groups decided together, where inland flooding is the biggest one and severe weather, which we encompassed, like hurricanes could be, or snowstorms, ice storms, serious winds that knock power lines over, that could all be encompassed under severe weather. And then drought, and then extreme temperature. So that could be extreme cold or extreme heat. Both have consequences. And then you can break up, you know, like we were talking about the actions, putting on sunscreen, breaks that up further, as you can see, the next slide. So the hazards would go, it's like a matrix. So the hazards go across the top. And then each of these sections, you put in something that's at risk. So back to the sun example, your skin would be a feature. Your skin is something that could be affected, or your hair, if you stand out in the sun, your hair gets lighter. So that maybe is a strength, maybe you want to lighten your hair, I don't know. So in each of these, you could put flooding and then things affected by flooding or each of those four categories. Then we did that process. It's a lengthy process, as you can imagine, because there are four hazards. And then there are, this has three, but there were like six features in each one. So schools were something that was put in, infrastructural. Societal, we had low-income population or elderly population who in heat or severe storms maybe could be trapped or lose power. If you lose power, they're more at risk. Environmental assets could be like your strong agricultural community, that you have a lot of open space, that's awesome, some great wetlands. So those are all features. And then you would categorize where they are, who owns them, and then whether or not they're a vulnerability or a strength. So some of those things are great, right? I think one thing that my group said a lot was that rural culture is really appreciated. So that was a super big strength that we focused on. And then based on those, you can take actions, which we're going to talk about. So these were some of the features that the groups mentioned as very common. So culverts and dams, flooding, obviously with lots of high groundwater, flooding's going to be something that happens a lot. And with culverts, if your culvert's undersized, like if not enough water can fit through it, you're going to flood over a road. If your dams are breaking or privately owned, you can't really regulate those as a town, what happens downstream if someone all the way upstream just lifts up the dam, everyone's houses downstream are going to flood. So these are all features that we talked about. State major roads, those are seen as a strength because you guys don't have to upkeep them and you can evacuate if something goes wrong. So that was a big strength. And just different features, shelter facilities, something we talked about, private wells and septic. That was a big one because high groundwater and private wells mean it's harder if there's a drought, right? We're reliant on yourself and drilling a new well and that's the cost of the owner. So these are some societal features, like as we talked about before. So zoning bylaws for elderly population, town demographic, rural character. So not all of these are vulnerabilities, some of these are strengths, like we talked about. Rural character was considered a strength. We get some big rural character components on my team. Sheltering facilities would be, you could have a vulnerability and a strength. So there are strengths because you have some, there are vulnerabilities because we need to sort of beef them up, make sure we have, you know, blankets or food or a generator. And then the last category is environmental features. So you have a large amount of biodiversity because you have so many wetlands. High groundwater, again, good and a bad thing. Bad for septic systems, sometimes good for wells. Farms, open space, Cisco, tree cover, et cetera. So then moving on to the actions, these are all of the things, well, not all the things, these are several things that are related to a feature. So putting on sunscreen is the example. So updating emergency evacuation plan. That was something that was related to maybe shelters or emergency operation plan. Where, what's the state of your evacuation plan? Do people know where the exit route is? Do people know who to call? If everyone's calling 911, like what do they do next? Implementing open space plan, kind of picking up the big ones here. So the open space plan is something that was seen as really important in the town because you guys seem to be ripe for redevelopment. As people sell land, there's big open lands that are available and so people can come in and build big developments. And what do you do then with schools and new septic or sewer, what are you going to do? So if you have some way to maintain whatever your vision for the town is, then that can be implemented through either an open space plan or the top one, zoning bylaws and stormwater regs. So that means if someone did come in and wanted to build a development, they would have to follow the rules to make sure that the town is also benefiting from that building. So these are sort of the top, each group, sorry, each group picked top five or six of all that huge list of actions and proposed them to the group. And then of all of these, we had to come down to even six, only six, so even fewer. And those top six were as follows. Develop and implement town center and campus plan. Develop community wellhead and backup water supplies. Update zoning bylaws, including natural resource design and stormwater regulations. Develop and upgrade townwide radio communications. Implement open space plan and new municipal storage building. And if I remember correctly, that was for both trucks and like salt and other things like that. So with these actions as like the most prioritized, sort of just one, almost like little bits from each category, right? You have some for environmental, some for town practical purposes. And that way, as we move towards next steps, which Melissa's going to take back over, you use these to sort of, if you're looking to go for an action grant, those are some of the things that you can start to use to say, this is something that was super important to our town and something we want to look into funding for. So from here, so all the results that Mary Beth was just talking about from the workshop, all those actions plus more are captured in our report. So we have a draft report right now. And whatever comes out of this listening session, any additional input, any additional thoughts can go into that draft report. And the draft report gets submitted to the state and the state either comments on it or accepts it and then will give Plimpton MVP designation. Once that's done, there's yearly progress reports that need to be done. And at that time, the plan can be updated. So if somebody thinks of something that we didn't in the workshop or we didn't at this listening session, something changes in town, you want to put another action there or revise, you did, you completed an action and we wanted to take it out on an annual basis, you have an opportunity to update, update the program. And you can apply for action grants for any of the actions in that report. So starting in April is the first, is the next round of grants that opens up. So you can, you can submit on that. Between $25,000 and $2 million has been awarded per project for the action grants. And they're giving us like a six to 18 month timeline depending on the project. So that's really the only caveat with it, is that whatever you submit on is supposed to be finished within a year. You can phase projects out and submit for, you know, a design phase versus, you know, if something's going to take longer. The state has about $10 million available annually for these grants and the only match, it requires a 25% match in funding, either cash or in-kind services. In 2019, the average action grant amount was $390,000. And in 2019, the action grants funded 36 of 68 projects that were applied for. This kind of gives you an idea of, you know, where it's, where it's going. So at this point, I'd like to open it up for any questions, comments. Like I said, there's a few people here from the, from the working group. You might have, have some thoughts. Or if anybody has questions on the process, anything that we looked at, any actions, we'd be happy to take those at this time. It's a lot, it's a lot to think about.
Would you go back to the slide?
Yeah.
It has our goals on it or the actions?
Actions.
Yep.
Yep, so like I said, these, these were the top six in each of the small groups. There's maybe, I don't even know how many in the whole report, our findings report does list every single action that the group came up with. So there might have been 40 or 50 total that were brought up in the workshop and are documented in the report. And this is what, this kind of vetted out is, is the top six from each group. It was interesting in the workshop too, that we kind of had two groups going and they had different ideas on the top six. The way that I put these bullet points here were the two different groups' ideas. So one of them was a little more safety-focused and the other one was a little more planning-focused. And when we came together in the big group and kind of looked at them all together, I think both groups kind of, you know, could relate to each side, but hadn't necessarily thought about it. So a lot of that comes out of this workshop. When you get people from different departments in the same room talking about what's important to them, you know, you realize, realize everything that the town has to kind of think about. Go ahead.
For the action grants, are there dependencies other than the MVP status at the state?
So it is a competitive grant, so half of them were funded, that were applied for last year. So the things that you want to think about are those nature-based solutions. There's a, there's a criteria when you submit for the action grant and certain things that they'll give more points to when you submit a project. So if you can incorporate some sort of green design, LED type something, then that'll give you a little higher weight to your projects.
But there's no other formal dependencies such as some other plan or something has been already approved or something by the state?
No.
I guess a single track?
Yeah, no, it's a single track. And a lot of people ask how this is different from the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is through, which is the national funding source. And that's basically the difference, is this is exclusively state funding. So it's only, you know, Massachusetts. They did talk, it's a fairly new program, so they're still kind of figuring out what projects that they will fund. They have a whole list and they keep adding to it. For example, this past year, they just added to the list of potential projects, the vector-borne diseases, all the stuff that's been, you know, coming up with the mosquitoes and the ticks and education-type projects are something you can now apply for through this grant. So they're kind of, seem to try to be open-minded as far as, you know, it's not just for culverts and flooding. You can kind of think a little bit outside the box on this one. And it's not just for concrete structure building, it can be a study. A lot of towns will say, we, we know we have problems with our culverts and flooding, but we don't know exactly which ones are the worst or where or why, or if we fix this culvert, how will it affect another one? You can submit on studies and they will fund, fund those as well. They'll fund education and outreach type programs.
So is that where like reaching out to the bog owners or landowners that are agricultural use might kind of come under like a study or however?
Right, yep, it could. There was a, there was a lot of talk about that and I think that, I think that could have a nature-based solution incorporated into it. If you're trying to really think smart about what happens to that land when it eventually turns over rather than, you know, impervious area and stormwater, it's a big, big change when you convert something like that.
Can you speak to some of the examples of where some towns have either altered the 25% or what they've done in terms of in-kind match to be eligible?
So I believe that they could do, you know, for an in-kind match, you could do things like, it would be maybe like man-hours, if you could show that someone in town is working on the project or managing it in some way. I mean, I guess it depends on, on what the project is, if you have a culvert project or something like that structural and you could have your highway department do some of the labor, you know, that would be an example of in-kind match. On the study component would be more if you had someone who could, who could manage that study or collect data or do something in that regard. Does that make sense?
To piggyback on this, is there a list of 36 projects approved last year and which ones did the in-kind and what they did for the in-kind?
There is, if you go on the, on the state website, and I can get that information out to the group here, we can get it posted probably. But on the MVP website, if you just go into Mass Vulnerability, they talk about the grant and they have a section in there where you can look up all the past projects and I'll say what they are. I don't know if it gets into how they made the match, it might or might not. But there are also, the state just in the past six months has hired regional coordinators for the MVP program. And so this area has a regional coordinator who you're encouraged to work with if you're going to submit on an action grant. if you're gonna submit on an action grant. Um, so you're not, you know, going down the wrong path. Or if you have a couple of projects that you're thinking about and you wanna pick one, they can help kind of figure out which one is probably your best chance and provide some of that information on the matching and the funding and the process.
I, I, I did talk to, I think it's Courtney?
Mm-hmm.
And she said, this was about a month ago. And she said that the new guidelines for this year would be out in April. And that she wasn't sure if the guidelines were exactly the same every year or if the emphasis was the same. Cause they're like, what, 18 guidelines or something? And that, um, that from year to year, the emphasis might change. Like one year it might be more infrastructure, hardware or whatever. And another year it might be nature or whatever. So how do we sort of plan ahead for that? Cause it's such a short window, you know, to get yourself prepared, say for a six-week window starting April 1st if you don't know.
Yep.
If the guidelines aren't even out yet, it's due April 4th or?
It's not due, so it opens in April.
Okay.
So that's when they'll come out with those guidelines or, you know, they'll come out with the request.
It's due six weeks later?
But then you have about, yeah, six weeks. So I think that's where it comes in to really try and work with these coordinators and see if they have a pulse on, you know. And I don't, I don't know, um, how it works exactly. But I don't know that those, the type of project shakes out from what's submitted based on, you know, what the towns are submitting if they see... You know, a lot of people submitting on vector borne diseases because that's the hot topic, you know, for this year. And last year it was culverts. Um, I'm not sure if it happens to be based on, you know, a product of what type of proj- projects they're seeing.
At the time, again, I know she's new. She said that probably the emphasis would be clear by about early April. But again, that's very hard then if you wanna figure out how you qualify within six weeks. So I just wondered if there was more information about how the strategy was being rolled out.
Yeah, it's a little, like, I think the program being so new is they're trying to work with people. They're trying to be open-minded and flexible, which, yeah. They do encourage some, or they, I don't know, encourage is the right word, but they'll, they seem to be open to regional, um, regional projects as well. If you in a neighboring town or a couple of towns have a thought on doing a regional plan for something or a regional action, um, you can apply for something together. And they'll, they'll look at that. There's a couple, um, there's a couple of communities who have done this process regionally as well.
So a little more on the timeline. The, um, application for an action grant opens in April. There's six weeks to, um, complete the application. And then how long is the, uh, review period?
They don't give a definitive timeline. But I think in the past, we've seen it turned around in a couple of months.
And then how long to complete a project?
So they'll give, it's on average a year. So from the time that you're awarded until the project needs to be completed is typically a year.
So municipal finance being the way it is, how do towns deal with this 25% match?
I think it's, you know, I think it's case by case. I know what you're saying, but I believe it's some, I believe it's a reimbursement program. Or at least the planning is where, you know, you get reimbursed for the money that's being...
But towns end up having to appropriate the money at town meeting and the like. And I, I mean, is there any provision for a period of time to go ahead and get that funding?
Funding? Um, I'm not sure. We'd have to talk to the regional coordinator on that. But it, I mean, everything that I've read and seen, it's, it's, um, you know, they make it pretty clear that you have a year from, you know, when they award the contract or get the contracts all signed with the town.
A year to complete the project.
To complete the projects. So that, that's one of the things...
Go ahead. So self-funding, you're saying that if we got a grant in September, we'd funded ourselves that September 12 months and then get reimbursement at the end? Is that when we retroactively, like, get some 75% back? Are we funding 100%?
I'm not, you're not, uh, I'm not sure. We'd have to talk to the, the regional coordinator on the finances. Yeah. How that works and things.
Well, I guess more, just very specifically, at the time of the request that the grant was put in, do you have to have the funding and 25% lined up at that point? Or can it be that the funding will be gathered as, if the grant is approved, then we would be done on the hook to gather the 25%?
I think it's part of, right, as part of the application, you need to say where you expect that 25% to come from.
Okay. You sort of expect not, like, already...
Right.
Is, is there any support in the development of the proposal?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
Can the town apply for more than one grant?
You can.
And could we, because a lot of these items, particularly the, um, radio equipment, update shelter facility, emergency operating center, the ones that are related, could we lump those together and apply for one grant to check off several boxes?
You could, yep. Just because... You have to finish in the year, yeah, you gotta make sure. But just because it's written, the sentence is written a particular way in the report doesn't mean you have to abide by that particular wording for, for the action grant application.
But you said the, the, the green solutions typically are given preference over, um, purchase of, um, like commodities or safety equipment?
Correct.
What if it was an electric, fire engine?
So you'll be yours out? I did not do that anymore.
I mean, I have heard them say before, like...
It's funny saying that. I was thinking, well, some people has a new truck coming out in the next year or something that supposedly will have a GEW 3.0 or 4.0, but feel like it. And straight past to a school.
Yeah. You'd never know.
I have heard them say, you're probably not gonna get funding to purchase like a diesel generator. Um, we've had a town ask, can we get funding for undergrounding utility lines as part of a downtown center project? And they said, probably not.
And perhaps undergrounding lines to your, um, shelter?
Maybe. But these are the, these are the things that I think are worth talking to the regional coordinator ahead of time cause sometimes they can give quick answers on, yeah, no, that's not worth it.
Well, and we could apply for grants to, um, plan for these in year one and then the second year, we implement.
Correct. Yep.
Work through all the ins and outs of it.
On the, as I said, so on the funding piece, you know, you said this budget had been 10 million. Now, if you look at the early slides you put up there about all the other towns coming in
Yep.
for that, is there any, uh, word about thinking about how that funding goes? Or is that just gonna be more and more people going after the same as more and more is applied?
Um, right, you know, it, it could change. It's not a set number. Um, you know, Governor Baker seems to continually be pushing the climate change initiatives and, you know, trying to keep this money available and get as much as he can. But, yeah, there's no, there's no guarantee that it'll go up or down or I think it will be more competitive this round now that more towns are getting the MVP designation. There's gonna be more towns submitting for projects, so.
And is there thinking that you might get two action grants but, or one? I mean, how piggy could we be? I mean, can you go back in sequence, you know, to get, oh, let's try action grants again? And would they sort of say, well, you had an action grant last year, take a year off or?
Yeah, I don't think they'll, I don't think they'll tell you not to submit. I think you can always submit. But I'd be willing to bet that they're gonna try and spread the money around. Cause everybody's gone through this process and just to be fair, you know, they're gonna try and distribute it around the state.
So that gets back to Christine's idea of having a planning grant with the hope that you immediately followed or soon followed with an action grant. That may or may not be a safe assumption. Cause that would be a way to have a continuous support, but that, that isn't necessarily promoted?
Um, I don't know that it's promoted or not promoted. I don't know if anyone has done that yet because it is such a new program. But I would, you know, I would also think that, um, if you do have a study and it's successful, they might be more inclined to invest in something that they know is good and that they've already invested in, you know, to propel it forward. I don't know, kind of speculation.
And they do have... I know that, um, Metapoyset, year one, applied for planning and to purchase, uh, a large section of land that was kind of in a floodplain, uh, waterfront, um, or oceanfront land. And then the second year, they, uh, applied for the funding to purchase the land and it was, it went through.
Yes, they, they also have said that even in the first year, they had towns that did get two action grants and then, so they have awarded multiple times. And so they're not saying that they won't, but I think common sense says, pick wisely still.
And then more towns gotta get now, so it's worth it.
Some of the, um, different grants piggyback off of each other too. Um, we've looked at some of the, like, the culvert grants will ask, do you have MVP designation? And you can check off the box on some of the other programs and it kinda can help or you can get funding from different sources for some, you know, same projects or different stages.
Just so I understand the timeline. This is the first steps if you go into getting our MVP designation.
Correct.
So what we come up with, uh, is we submit to the state. Their wisdom reveals upon it. So that being said, the timeline coming up, are we even eligible to move forward on a grant this April or is it, do we still have some hurdles together?
I think, I think that you will be able to submit in April. We're planning on submitting this report in the next couple of weeks. Definitely by the end of the month. Um, that'll give them a month to review it and, you know, accept it. Um, the ones we've done have been accepted. We haven't seen any comments or issues, um, that we've had to address between submitting it and the designation. So...
Just clarification on the actions and requests then. So tonight is listening tour. Yep, we're good. You can submit the paperwork. You then wind up, you submit it and wind up with the MVP designation. That becomes step one.
Correct.
And then as we have trial or 16 or other items that are in the draft, we should probably pick what's the most important one if we wanna try and get something in critical submission.
Right.
Is that fair?
Yep, and there's nothing stopping you from thinking about that right now and trying to decide what you wanna move forward with. That was also something that was considered when we got together, both groups. Each group had six actions. When we came together, there was a lot of, you know, back and forth about not only what is most important and what is most needed, but what is gonna get funding. So if you go to the six, the only six, we tried to have a, a couple of different types of options so that you can kind of wiggle around saying, oh, it was one of our top actions with several different types of projects that you, you could think of.
So those six, cause I understand you are now kind of like identified through the workshop as priority items. Is that, that's in the report? And do you think the state looks at that when they're looking at their, their funding?
Yes.
So they're, they're gonna be more towards what you identified as your priorities?
Again, like I said, every year, you'll have an opportunity to update the plan. So if something changes, um, you know, you can make revisions to the plan as well. As I said, we'll be, you know, working on finalizing the draft. If anybody thinks of anything, um, you know, when you leave this meeting, you could email this and she can relay that information and then you can get that, get that in there as well.
Are the, uh, successful grants available to look at? Are they online or something?
They are online, on the state's MVP website. They do have them up there.
As I said, green, uh, green, excuse me, green plans are kind of a favorite of mine. So you're saying, so for an example, if you're looking at a new municipal storage building, um, you kind of wanna be thinking about including designs for that? Um, looking towards, you know...
Correct.
Solar powered or whatever?
Yep, that's, that's right. So you'd wanna incorporate those into the, into the design if you can. Also, it seems to me that a lot of the people reviewing the grant applications are not technical people. Um, oftentimes they, they are sort of new to the process or they're from sort of, uh, just sort of a different perspective. And so when you write the grant, it's really important to write it as a story, like sell yourself like you would in an interview. And so if you pick something like the municipal storage building, you would also wanna emphasize, no, thanks. What used to be a leaky roof and salt stored there, now that could leak into our fogs and cause all these other issues. So even if you just had a building, it would be a green display because of the way that we're protecting the environment by storing our leaky oil trucks and wherever, wherever, wherever.
That raises, who are the reviewers? Are they scattered throughout the state? Are they only in our region or?
I, I believe it's made up of those regional coordinators.
Okay.
And people that work within, within that department.
So the central staff and the regional coordinators, right?
Right. Another great reason to become friends with them. So, yeah, that's a good point, Mary, that they don't, when you're submitting on these projects, they don't have to be designed, you know? It can be, um...
Sell it.
Right.
Sell it, great.
A little more conceptual, if you want.
I think it's really developing a multi-year plan against what you're doing. So if year one, you're doing your wellhead and your backup water system, then year two, maybe you're doing a central septic system. So you have a story that's building on itself as an appropriate year. Because then when you go back for multi-years, say, yep, well, we did phase one last year. Thank you for your help with that. Now we're on to phase two, which is the town looking at your plan.
Correct, I think that's a good approach. Yeah, the actions that are highlighted in the plan too can be used in other, other areas of town planning. It's a good resource just to see what the group came up with for concerns and priorities and projects.
I wonder building on, like, even if you got, if you, if like you're saying, you're using that as a town basis for other types of funding. If they would base some of their decision on, well, they would forward with this grant, with this project and now they're building on it. With this grant, with this MVP grant. I wonder if that would give it those steps.
You know what I'm saying? If you're getting, you're using other resources to kind of...
Yeah, if you started using other resources where you have plans for other resources.
And one of the things, even for the planning grant, that would come up is if you have a hazard mitigation plan, um, that you needed to update, there was, there's, can be opportunities to use funding from the MVP program to update your hazard mitigation program. So, you know, they're open for helping with these other, you know, planning initiatives where funding can come from.
Got a question for you. Do you know the, um, the 25% match? Does that have to be town funds or could the town apply for a grant to pay the 25%?
I'm pretty positive it has to be town. Town funds or in-kind services, oh, yeah. Yeah.
And the town has to fund those in-kind services? So if they're providing that, would that count?
Like if it was donated, like a donation?
Sure.
I'm not sure, but it's a good question. You could definitely ask.
Like, that's where I was going as well, but...
Yep.
Maybe it'd be town employees or it could be residents that are committed to it that would come towards it.
Yeah, no, I mean, that makes, makes sense.
So in, in some...
So in some of the immigrants in the past, a lot have the in-kind service, gavvy out to them, and it can be a lot of different things. For instance, when we look at the radio communications, for instance, just as an example, the way the technology's set up now, as opposed to when you put things in and you pass something to be on forward with different software, open software, already exists that we dovetail into those, sometimes can be considered a lot of the in-kind service when they are something that's an ongoing payment that's already budgeted. It's, it's a matter of how to label it as such.
Right.
So you can get creative with in-kind service and still be good for that as a law.
Okay. And they also said, like, if you have a meeting and you talk about, you know, your project, write down, you know, keep a spreadsheet of everyone that was there, their salary employee, how much they get paid, or whatever, you know, like a rate, and that, that's how much money that you contributed to the project. And so either if you have someone like Beta, or if you do it yourselves, have a spreadsheet, that is all the work that you've done on it, because more, before you know it, you know, town administrators done a ton of stuff on it, or whatever. So that all counts. And if you're keeping track of it, it adds up. And they were encouraging that.
Do you know where Halifax and Middleboro are, or start out the maps we have?
Halifax and Middleboro? I'm not sure.
They're on the map, they're yellow.
They're yellow? Oh, we mean...
I'm just thinking, is, as we have projects that might, they tie close to our neighboring towns, that we have a joint project, joint funding.
Gotcha.
Because then it'd give more of a regional impact.
Okay. Yeah, the, so anyone who got grant funding for planning in this phase all have the same deadline to get, you know, the reports in. Again, the planning grant was another one, where once it was awarded, you had a year, you have a year to submit the, the report. So they can't be too far off from you. I'd imagine that most towns are trying to get it in before April.
A lot of good information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice.
Coming. Appreciate it. And like I said, if you have any afterthoughts, feel free to reach out to Liz and share them. I'll try and get them in. That's all we have? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.